I surprise surprise.
You did make it, didn't you?
No, but.
You didn't know either?
I don't, I sure didn't.
Came around.
I drove up and said, what in the world is going on?
Twenty five meeting of the Almanzt County Planning Board will come to order. Uh, I've got the role. Have you got it?
Yes, sir. We have the quarantum done business.
All right. Um. We need to look to see if there's any public comments. I feel pretty good. I already know the answer.
I'm look, no public comments.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Amy is both present and absent.
Yeah, Henry emailed a couple days ago. I can note that. So. Um, that's already updated in the.
Awesome.
In our computer files.
Yeah.
So that'll be reflected. There are a couple of other.
One other item, we go had Lou instead of you had to fly instead of Lou.
That's right.
I mean. I didn't, there were so many pages. I didn't count all the pages. So whatever the email said it is.
Okay.
Uh. Under approval of the planning board then it's.
And that was changed as well to July. Yeah.
And there's an asterisk beside public comments. Which maybe is from the agenda.
Yeah.
Where's? You know, I really cut and paste the.
Yeah.
You may have already called on this.
I got the date of the previous minutes, but not the asterisk. And you're right. We typically just kind of copy and then make notes underneath. Each section.
On the third page, and it's section six eleven four three landscaping aesthetics. I think you may expect there should be a fee in inspection. Is that a site in section maybe with far more of the root system vegetation? Just.
Can you repeat that again please?
Uh, it says, uh, second sentence and added a note that a site in section.
Uh, okay, yeah. Inspection, okay.
Make out nothing. Approval minutes of August fourteen twenty twenty five with the corrections. Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor, I?
Oh.
All right, good. Everybody had a chance to. Stew on six point ten and six point eleven?
We get the medial comments from Tom. On six point eleven.
And we made it start with six ten.
We missed a couple of things.
On page four, the packet of the packet. Under a six ten four balance watershed. Cut down paragraph development and least under fine use. Or non-resident, maybe it should be development for use. It just seems, it says forty thousand square feet per dwelling unit or non-residential development use.
Yeah.
It just, just kind of.
Yeah, that might just kind of be a typo error on my part. Obviously, there's another insertion of the word use a few words later. So I'm not sure I recall why that use is in there. But yeah, I think you're right. It probably just needs to be stripped out of there.
Or, or just an or something. On page seven, under six point ten point nine, this one development. There's a reference to section four oh three B. calculation of project ends need. And it's not. I don't think we have a calculation of project.
Yeah, exactly.
If this came out of that model. Ordinance I talked about.
Yep.
Um, back to the government call. Uh, at the bottom of page seven, six ten eight two should do, uh, that H near nine.
Where was that again?
Uh, six point eight point. Six point ten point eight point two at the bottom of page seven. Uh.
Reconstruction of buildings.
Yeah, reconstruction of buildings built upon here. It's just a numbering.
Okay.
Secret. The last thing I have. This is. On page eleven under two. Um. Where it's talking about, um. Minor variances, uh, being heard. There's, there's notice to local governments having jurisdiction in the watershed of the variance. Uh, there's no, uh, notice of, um. That assume that can be noticed joining property owners who posted like wave of variance.
Mm-hmm.
They just some. I don't know if that needs to be in there. Or just refer back to notices provided by. General statute. One sixty D.
So under the. Uh. The first paragraph under minor variances, it references general section one sixty D dash four to six.
Okay. Right.
And that procedure.
Now have the notice.
Requires staff to mail the joint property.
Gosh.
Right?
Yes. I didn't go back and get it off.
No, but it's a good point. And again, as I mentioned here in the moment, this is copied basically verbatim from the state's model ordinance.
That's all I.
Thank you.
I've got a few notes.
Okay.
As well, just to kind of update you guys on what you're seeing at this meeting versus, um. The original presentation of the last meeting. I'll just kind of summarize each section because a lot of it is basically just copied with the state's model ordinance. Which was, um. Part of our conversation at the last meeting was making sure to reference that model ordinance. So section six point ten point nine. Is. Uh, a new section on existing development. That section is identical to the state's model ordinance that it basically just protects existing developments and the maintenance of. Existing developments and recent sharing from the regulations of the watershed ordinance. Six point ten point twelve. Is an existing. Section, but it's just been, or existing language, but it's just been moved to a new section. All the wording is still the same. The biggest change, and Tom touched on this just a moment ago. Comes with six point ten point thirteen. So. Our ordinance already has, if you look at the definitions, it has, um, definitions for minor variance and major variance as it relates to watershed. Develop. But the actual ordinance itself doesn't have anything on the procedures for those minor and major variances. So what this section does is basically say our existing board of adjustment. Would act as what's known as the watershed review board. And if anybody requests a variance of the watershed regulations. Just like if they requested any other variance, they would go before the watershed. Slash board of adjustment. And so in the details there, you got, you just got the procedures for variances and appeals. Those types of matters that would go before the board of adjustment. And then six point ten. That's fourteen. Amendment procedures, again, that's just a. Uh, essentially a verbatim copy of the state's model business. And that gives the watershed review board the opportunity to, um. Make comments on the proposed revisions to the ordinance. But that's all I've got for six point. Ten watershed ordinance. But I'll be sure to make those other minor corrections as well. All right. Ready for six point eleven?
Uh huh.
All right. So there was some, um. Amy, you've had some comments at the last meeting and then Tom had emailed me as well about. These types of distancing requirements and other requirements as it relates to. Structures within the fall zone or a difference between a home owned by. The, the home being owned by the property owner where the tower exists versus just any home on the same property as where the tower exists. So. I tried to clean that up. Uh, a little bit here in. Six point eleven point three point one. Change the wording to specify adequate spacing between a tower and structure rather than simply a carve out for residences owned by the property owner. So the current language just makes a carve out the residences owned by the property owner. But this would require the same type of spacing for any residence. For any structure. Under section six eleven four two. We clarified the language on fall zones. And then. On Tom's recommendation, we had previously completely taken up a section on roads. And that just comes back again to the ordinance. Um, this next item we might want to. Discuss in a little bit more detail, and this is something Tom brought up as well. Six point eleven point four point three. So that's the landscaping and aesthetics. If you read through this section, it really serves as kind of just a recommendation. The landscaping should look like X, Y, Z and should, you know. Developers should practice good husbandry. Um, practices, things of that nature. If we're going to require that, that should probably be changed to shawl, right? I think that's your, your thoughts as well.
Your should is.
Is very option.
Is optional.
Kind of the recommendation. Shawl is, this is what we expect.
Let's be honest, the vegetation about that is never going to. Alter the view of the huge tower. Big intense of the closure with all the cabinets and stuff there.
Exactly.
So it's not just sitting out in the field.
So I think, I mean, it's obviously up to the discretion of the board and by extension the commissioners. Um, the way that it operated, um. In my previous jurisdiction is we did have a fencing and we did have a landscape buffer. But the planning director has the ability to waive the landscape buffer requirements, which I did on a couple of occasions. Because the cell tower is literally going in the middle of the cow pasture. Where the cows would just eat whatever vegetation you put in there. Uh. That's an option if we wanted to go that direction, but. More than anything, I think it's just important to decide if that's going to be a requirement, we probably need to change all those shoulds to shalls.
Seems to me like it would be easier to write shawl. With the understanding that, for example, if it was in a cow pasture and you fenced the cows out. It could be a should. Cause if you put should in there, it ain't ever gonna happen.
Right.
In theory, if it's on a large piece of property and it sits back and there's nothing, no, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a bit, you know. Is there a mechanism on this to ask for a variance or a relief?
Well, probably the closest thing, and it's kind of similar to what I mentioned a moment ago. If you look at the last bullet point under the landscaping aesthetics. Upon showing that existing vegetation will provide a suitable buffer. Yada, yada, yada. The planning director, their designate, designate may grant a waiver to the buffer requirements. Uh, contained above. And I added this in because I think it's a, a better way to go about. Is that a site inspection may be required in order to make that determination. They basically request that. You know, we shouldn't, the staff just be under the obligation to grant it. We should, I think, at least visit the site and say, okay, yeah, you've got. Plenty of trees here. Nobody's going to see this from the road or. It's going to be in the middle of the cow pasture and cows are eating all your trees, right? You know, kind of make that on-site determination. So we could keep that. We could tweak that language a little bit. Um. We've got some latitude here on, of what the draft. Draft can send along.
Well, with that exclusion in there, going from should to shawl doesn't seem like a big deal to me.
Right.
Just flexibility there, which is important.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead. Oh, we were just talking about the site inspection may require in order to make such a determination. Uh. Should that be should, uh, should have a, instead of just may, should it be? It should be required in order to make a. Instead of may, I mean, may is like, you know.
Will be required?
Yeah.
I think that's fine, yeah. It's, that, that requirement falls on staff. So.
Right.
That, that basically would say a site inspection shall be required by staff in order to make that determination. I got, I got no problem with that.
The, the legal problem is, is it, it says you may bring a waiver, but. Usually if you're gonna, if there's gonna be that kind of latitude, it's like, or. Um, you know, what if they argue with you about it? If you had some standards, this is what we'll consider. We're granting that waiver. So you have. The administrator has guidance.
Yeah.
Advocate knows, you know, what to expect. Otherwise. Somebody could say, well, that's just your. Think making, you know.
Yeah.
You're picking on me or you're, you're being hard on me than somebody else.
Yeah.
It's usually when you're going to do something like that to give yourself some parameters. That if, if I can go, this is, this is my box.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can't go outside of that box. Anything else, you're gonna have to go to somebody else. You have to go to the board of adjustment.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, great.
Well, I, I just, I was just thinking, you know, that it shouldn't be to. Because just like what you said. If he decides he wants to come and look at mine. And then you put in.
Mm-hmm.
And he don't, then I say, well. Why did he go over there to his and it, you know, made me do this?
And, and.
It's just the same requirement for.
Could have been no malice. It can just be.
Yeah.
He went and looked at yours and it was this day.
Right.
Something that was on his mind. And went looked at mine.
Yeah.
Two or, a, a few months later and was thinking about something else.
Yeah.
I didn't remember.
Yeah.
Um.
But you don't have no problem with changing that thing.
Yeah.
Maybe that for me, if it's.
You won't should or will.
Yeah, if it's in the middle of the cow pasture, you're active.
Yeah.
You know. Starting livestock.
Exactly, yeah.
Where.
A little bit more specific criteria that we can, that we can lean on.
If it's so many feet off the road.
Right.
Um. Which it has to be anyway, because that's, the whole point of having roads back in was what if someone has acreage, owns property on both sides of the road. Um, there was something about, there was a, a fall zone.
Yeah.
From a road.
Oh.
Road right away. That's why I said, well, if you take out road, then. They could put it right up next to the road because their property straddles.
Hmm.
The road crosses through their property.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay, so I can definitely change. All the shows to shells and then add some more specific language on the parameters for granting the, uh, relief from the landscape requirements. And a required site inspection.
Yeah.
All right, section six point eleven point five. So this deals with. Uh, co-locations and shared facilities. Uh, Tom had a question about kind of the legal. Um. The legal reference here, the legal. Ability to get into that, um. On a couple of these items, this included. The general assembly probably within the last, I think, seven or eight years. Changed the legislation so the local governments really can't inquire about any kind of business practices of cell tower developers when they go out to develop their towers. So you can look at setbacks and landscaping and. A lot of the features we've talked about, you really can't inquire about, um, you know, do they have to put a tower here versus could they put it somewhere else? Kind of that market analysis. So. This entire section. I believe since this. Current ordinance was drafted versus today has been swapped out. And so all of the language that you see there underlying. On page seven is base, basically a verbatim. Copy of North Carolina general statute one sixty B dash nine thirty four. The heading of which is co-location and share facilities. So that's just a mirror image of state law. All right. Six point eleven point seven. Uh. This one I might need y'all's. Input on, especially you, Michelle. Item number six. Six point eleven point seven, item six. The county may require each applicant to post a performance bond to cover the potential cost of removal. So in other words, a tower. Goes in, but after a while they stop using it and it just kind of stands there and. Nothing happens. And what, I forget, what was your question on this?
Uh, one is, is, you know, we may. And that's. I then do it like you, you know, what, you might be doing one, you may, uh, then do it and. You know, there'll be some, you know, what's the, the amount? You know, is it going to be?
Yeah.
A hundred, a hundred twenty five percent of the cost of the removal.
Yeah.
Or something like that, but just. Just doesn't give. Give the administrator or the county much guidance. Um, as, as to what's at work.
So you think it'd be appropriate for us to have that authority to. To utilize a bond if we ever need as a county to take down a tower?
So I've only seen one tower that didn't have any antennas on it in my life, but it, it was never removed.
Yeah.
Uh.
As far as I know, but. Uh, I'm not sure I've ever experienced an abandoned cell tower.
Yeah. Should just from a.
Well, you ain't, maybe you ain't live.
If I'm gonna build a, a cell tower in the county, I post that.
And cell towers.
Yeah.
Renewing every year.
Man, you should not be around reads, but again, it's made. So if you were to.
Could be.
Currently require a developer to do that and say, well, what authority do you have? Cause it's made.
And, and again, what's the value of it?
Right.
Ten percent? Is it fifteen percent? Is it?
Do you have any thoughts on this as our resident legal expert?
Um. I would love to see what else is out there, what people have considered when, if they, if they're requiring that bonds be posted. And is this only if it's. Notify that it's abandoned. Is that the way that I read it? It's coming under this, um, they have to give notice, have to give a hundred eighty days. Uh, and then is that when they're going to post a bond? Because it's going to have to be dismantled and there's costs to that and. The liability and all that.
Unless you notice them, if I don't, if I'm the developer and I don't renew it.
I know that that's, that's, uh, something that, uh. The farm viewers pushed for years on these cell tires and these, uh. Solar farms and stuff. Is to make the whoever's running these things. Responsible for removing them instead of. Uh, jerking up, leaving and leaving it up to the landowner to have to do away with them. And which could be more than. The money that they had made the whole time they'd been there. So I think. Whatever we can do to make it, make the whoever's doing this responsible if they wanted. Maybe they just want to. Move that tower from, from my house to Rodney's house. And they just want to abandon it. Then it's sitting there and there's whoever the landowner is, is responsible for removing it or it's just going to stand there from now on forever.
Good.
Supposed to be Saturday. I think it's, it's hardly think of it. I can, you know. Moving on, but. I'll send you.
Okay.
You something that I have.
Yeah, so I could definitely look further into that and see what other, what we ought to do. All right, so similar to the, um. Uh, the legal, um. Restriction I mentioned earlier by getting into kind of the business decisions of, of power developers. Six eleven point eight. B four. Uh, required documents to demonstrate the need for coverage in that geographical area. I don't think we are allowed to do that anymore. Based on, uh, one sixty D dash nine thirty three B. All right, six point eleven point nine administrative approvals. Tom pointed this out to me and I'm glad that he did. So the current ordinance allows for staff to impose conditions. On, um, power approvals. That's not really legal to do that unless it is particularly leaded. And tailored prior to the approval, which the ordinance does not. Um, similar to that, six point eleven point ten. We revised the section on planning board approval to basically do a simple pass stance. Um, current ordinance allows the planning board to approve towers with conditions. But in order to do so, you have to sit as a quasi judicial body and a conductive evidentiary here. Thanks, Steve. Get a little tricky. With that. And then, uh, this is another discussion item that I think it's worth getting into is, um. Just removing the county commissioners review. Uh, authority completely. So. Tom made an excellent point on this. Is it, the ordinance kind of seems to say a few different things at once. And it's almost as if the planning board doesn't approve. So they could appeal to the county commissioners. But the county commissioners could also approve and impose conditions, but that means they would have to sit as a quasi judicial body. They could, that never did cheer. So it just kind of gets. It's really messy fast. And this is anything I ran up to Brian or Rick or anything, but I don't know how the commissioners would feel about losing that. Losing that power even though they really don't. Exercise it now any.
Right.
You know? Do you have any thoughts on that?
But this is for, they're making the permit to actually have one located somewhere?
I think this would be, if I'm reading the ordinance correctly, this would be cell towers that are, um. Taller than ninety feet.
Hmm.
If they're under ninety feet, they can be approved administratively. If they're taller. Then they have to go through the. Planning board and then commission.
Well, that, now. Now. Wouldn't that? It wouldn't go to the commissioners, would it? It would go back to the, the newly formed.
Correct. Needs to. So the reason that language, this language is in here is, um, prior to the creation of current board of adjustment.
Right.
Commissioner served as the board of adjustment. So I've identified a few areas in the ordinance where. It refers to the board of commissioners, just assuming that they'll act as the board of adjustment because they previously acted as the board of adjustment. But you're right, an appeal. Will now go to the board of adjustment.
Yeah, and that's where it stops.
Well, unless it's further appealed, then it can go to superior.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But, but it stops at the candidate. Don't go, it's just like us on, or vehicleization. It stops. It stops with us. It don't go, you can't go to commissioners. It stops with us. And if you want to take it further, it goes on to the state.
Yeah, I think. Theoretically, you could still have appeal to the commissioners, but again, they would have to sit as a quasi judicial body.
Yeah.
They conduct an evidentiary hearing and they kind of delegated that power to the board of adjustment when they created a couple of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Now it stops there. I'm pretty sure.
Right.
In my.
Yeah, yeah.
It stops right there. It wouldn't go from, they couldn't appeal it from the board of adjustments to the commissioner.
Correct.
They'd go directly to the superior.
And the next thing would be the court.
You'd submit your record to the spirit for, they'd file a writ to have.
So I don't.
Transferred.
Yeah. So. It's just possibly a. A significant change, so I thought it was just worth discussing. Um, in addition.
I think you'd have a mixed reaction depending on who you ask on permission or someone would.
Yeah.
But be interested in knowing where a ninety foot towel would be going in the.
Do you know where the, when the last time was that the commissioners? Builded a.
I'll have to look back on the ordinances and, um, just.
But then again, I think.
I don't know that they're brand.
Yeah, I think it's only if the planning board denies it. Under the current draft.
Yeah.
When I first read the, the first draft, I was having. A hard time understanding who actually did what because it said. Administrator would. Been a while since I've read that before. It's almost like the administrator would review it. And then it'll go to the planning board. The planning board will either, either okay or deny it. Or oppose the conditions. And then it'll go to the board of county commissioners and then they can either approve it, approve with conditions or deny it. And it just seemed like. It's just a lengthy process. And it just seemed like it's just a lengthy process and not really, just the way it was worded, I was, it. I just, it just didn't sound like. It was making sense.
Right. Yeah.
Staffs reviewed it, it's in, it's meeting all the requirements and it goes to the board of county commissioners or it goes to the planning board. And you stand up there saying what meets all the technical requirements, then I should get my permit.
Exactly.
Um, but i- if, if, if the board, planning board, board of county commissioners won't have discretion over it, then they have to have some guiding. Standards to apply in making their decision and then they, then they have the discretion to apply conditions, same thing with planning board.
Right.
Uh, you know, the, the board of adjustment is the only board that can act uh within a quasi judicial.
Right.
Nature or apply conditions, but you have to be, you have to have your guidelines that you follow in making those cross decisions.
I think the two biggest problems that a lot of the stems from is. The current draft, the current ordinance inappropriately grants conditional approval authority to staff and the planning board. And then it also just assumes that the commissioners are gonna act as the board of adjustment because up until late twenty twenty three, that's what happened. So I think a lot of the confusion and inappropriate wording in the ordinance stems from those two.
This says above procedures followed and the board of commissioners approves the application. Or approves the application with conditions, the board would issue a permit. Six eleven point eleven B. So that kind of implies you have to do both. I can't remember the statutes, I'm, I'll, I'll need to. Look at it, I think there is a time limit that you have to make a decision on it.
Yeah.
For these, I can't do, there's something sticking out, but whoever makes the decision, it could be. Staff receives the application, reviews it, protects the compliance, staff believes it's okay, it goes to the planning board for review. And they make a recommendation to the plan for the commissioners and the commissioners have the final say. It's just where it gets those conditions is where it, it may automatically throws it into a, a quasi judicial.
Exactly.
Type of decision where they have to make findings of fact, they have to have guiding standards in making the decision and then they can. They can require the conditions.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at, I was, if we have any place, shouldn't that be? Should, I know, I know what you're saying, that, you know, it won't take the commissioners away, but since we've established this. It seems like this needs to be changed to reflect that, and I would say we need to strike that out. And if it don't pass here, then it goes.
Sure, they'll, they'll have the opportunity to amend it if they don't agree.
I think it needs to go to the board of adjustments rather than to the commissioner for approval.
Are you saying leave?
Well, I mean. If, if they would need to change that, take it out for the commissioners, it goes straight to them.
Be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense to be consistent, to be the board of adjustment.
It should.
So under this draft, that entire section is removed, six point eleven point eleven, with the county commission review, the entire thing is removed.
It's gonna be removed.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you look above that, six eleven ten C.
Oh, the, but this last part over here is, is it, it's with that?
I can't see what you're pointing to.
You've got six eleven, you got that struck out, but the six eleven eleven A and B over here is still, it's not struck out.
Is that not replacing? You know, your next.
Yeah, that's the issue I'm saying.
That, right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's. Does that replace what you're looking at? I had that noted and it's a place up front too, but I.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know y'all were talking about that section.
I, I, I maybe I moved, moved, got the horse for the cart here, but I was just reading this here.
There's a present in six eleven four one two, the board of commissioners.
Issuers of the permit.
Okay. I cleaned that up as well.
So it sounds like the, the question is to the commissioners, do they want to retain? For the these or are they okay with passing that off to the board of adjustment or?
Yeah.
Or to the planning board?
It, it makes more sense to me to send it to the board of adjustment because they created this special.
Yeah.
And most of them come from planning, so you've got the people that are familiar with the development and the, and the regulations.
That was, you know, that's really the, that's the reason they formed this so they wouldn't have to mess with it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just kind of talking plain, but that's.
So what I will do, what we'll do is keep. The section, removing the commissioners altogether, keep that as being removed. But I will clean this up, the issuance of the permit section so that it makes more sense relative.
It, it reflects what this says.
Okay. Perfect. I appreciate that clarification. I thought after I took out the commissioner section, I was.
Maybe, maybe they just looked at straight through that section too.
Yeah, possibly.
I'm not suggesting getting the planning board out of busy plan review if you like doing that.
Well, that's another good question too, is do you guys wanna be? Do you wanna be resolved in uh reviewing? In, in casual economy, it was basically just formality, the planning would held a public hearing on. Cell tower applications, but if the developers have provided all the regulations of the ordinance, then the public just showed up, gripped the gun, and then the planning board approved it anyway.
Well, I think more eyes has been put on it, is what, what everybody's looking at, if it had. May, maybe more eyes had been looking on the permits on the rock floor and stuff, maybe.
As a tech, kind of a technical body, that's that can set eyes, you got staff looking at it, we're gonna have the planning board look at it, make sure they. Concur that it's meeting all the requirements and then pass it on along to the general boards. Um, the only thing which has, it does go to the board of adjustments and it's quasi judicial. You, the planning boards. It, it gets messy and, and evidence presented that you're, you're, whatever you say can't be interviewed, so the evidence of your night or testified and.
I don't see it. But it's the whole thing, it, it's, the whole thing will start over. Just like had nothing ever happened here, you got, they will have to present their whole case and, and present it all over. And that's, it's similar to the same thing is on the board of equalization. They presented it to us and we make a, we make a clarification of it and if they don't like it, then they take it to the state. But when they go to the state, they gotta go through the whole process again. All the evidence and everything that was presented to us, they gotta present to them. So it's just a, am I, am I? So that would be the same thing here.
Yeah, just involving the planning board in it, while it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just can. Complicate if, if it's gonna be a quasi judicial decision.
Yeah, that would be the next step.
Complicated.
What, hope it wouldn't get to. That's what you always hope, it won't go to that next step, it can.
Yeah, I don't see the need for it to ever go to the board of adjustment, it's basically just an administrative process.
Yeah, you could still keep it just administrative and the planning board could be.
Well, you take it with you.
Right.
So in all your years on the planning board, do you recall approving a cell tower?
No. I re, I remember recollect. Having discussion about them, talking about this, but I don't remember a yes or no, raise your hand, vote, approve it.
Do you think the planning board should retain that authority? Or should it just be totally staff?
Well, at the end of the day. Isn't the rule, if you meet all the, if you check all the boxes, you get it anyway.
Essentially, yeah.
So, so the planning board, if, if, if you don't have the authority to say no, what's the purpose in saying yes?
Right.
That, that's, that's my personal opinion of it.
Yeah.
That's why a lot of times those types of decisions wind up being on staff level and in most subdivision ordinances, you'll find that the. Staff gets an application, it goes to the planning board, they make a recommendation on the, a set of preliminary flat, and then it goes to the, the governing body and they make the decision. Uh, here, it's all administrative, you check the boxes, there's a place, here, if you check all the boxes, you get your flat approved.
Sure.
Cell towers are all.
Yeah.
It might be a little more different.
The only thing that we, we would be doing, if, if my understanding is with. What, what we would be doing here is the planning board, is that we would just be checking the boxes that he done. To make sure that he done his boxes right, and that's just, that's what I'm saying about that second set of eyes, you know, um. I'm, uh, everybody makes mistakes and everybody misses something, but sometimes if you miss certain things, it can be detrimental. That's just my thinking, that's. I, I don't know, I, you know, I don't see nothing wrong with having. A second set of eyes on something that's been approved.
And, and there's not, and the only thing, right, there's not anything wrong with the staff reviewing it. With the planning board reviewing it, the technical review committee reviewing it, the commissioners, they didn't be. Have, to have a public hearing. Noon on Saturday at the court, I had to let the whole county come up here, there ain't nothing wrong with that. But at the end of the day. If you check off all the boxes, it's gonna happen.
Sure.
There seems to be less heartburn about stuff if everybody knows what's coming, nobody likes surprises. Your birthday, Christmas, the only days you want surprises.
So we're gonna keep the planning board review authority or get rid of that as well?
I think you should leave it.
I'll say, just leave it in there.
Okay.
I would.
We ain't playing by the word, type this stuff up, so ain't no big deal.
That's good to me. All right, so that's all that I've got for the wireless communication facilities ordinance.
Give them the junkyards.
Yep.
Well, not junkyards.
Well, we are gonna get into junkyards. And that is um something that's a little bit deep about these next two sections. Is my proposal is to make them into one ordinance, so now. Art, uh, article six point twelve is on um abandoned junk and nuisance motor vehicles and then. Uh, six point thirteen is on automobile graveyard and junkyard. And my thought is to combine them into one ordinance for two primary reasons. Reason number one is they deal with the same thing. They both deal obviously with junk vehicles, it's really just a matter of how many. And how many is reason number two. So if you read through the current abandoned junk and nuisance motor vehicle ordinance. It says a property owner may store up to three such motor vehicles on their property. Gotta put a cover on them, gotta put them behind their house, hidden out of sight, yeah, yeah, so. Then you get to the next ordinance, which deals with junkyards and automobile graveyards, and you look at the definition of that. And it says anybody storing six or more vehicles. Has to become a junkyard. So we have a gap. If you have vehicle four or five, you're right now coming in those. So this ordinance would say, this revision would say up to three. So, you know, nothing changes, once you go to four, then you gotta establish just automobile graveyard or junkyard. Now, we can wiggle that number, but. I will at least wanna make it consistent, right, make it, make a little bit more sense than it currently does. So that's part of, those are the two primary revisions I wanted to kind of mash these together. Um. Whatever that, so the other revisions here include simply reformatting sections for a more, more logical layout. Um, one of the biggest changes here involves creating new requirements for fencing around automobile graveyards. So if you look at. Six point twelve point eight. Automobile graveyard and junkyards. The second subsection on screening and fencing. As it stands right now, it basically says automobile graveyards can do a fence, if they don't do the fence, then they can do a landscape buffer. But there's absolutely no specifics on the fence at all. How tall does it have to be, what material does it have to be, I don't know, does it have to be at the right way by the road or does it have to be just around the area where cars are gonna be stored? We as staff don't have any specific guidance on that at all. So it's almost like the intent of the ordinance is to shield these cars from public view. But a property owner could put up a chain link fence that you can see right through and they're in compliance with the ordinance and you can still see all of the cars.
Man, what happened to that? It was, it used to be there, it was a, uh, that, it could, it had to be. Ten foot or twelve foot, I can't remember which.
Not gonna start lying.
Don't lie to them.
No, I'm not gonna say.
I, I know.
Split rail fence.
No, that, I know that that, that was in the ordinance at one time because it was a big. There was a big doo over that thing. I know that that was in there, I don't know how, who, what, I think got removed, but it had to be a twelve foot. Chain link fence, and if you had a chain link fence, it had to be latticed. It couldn't be visible from the road.
I believe you.
I don't know where it went to, but.
But I, I had not found it in the, so we've had to deal with a few. Few of these automobile graveyard, junkyard properties. And we just kind of had.
If you go down, if you go down there on seventy, you'll see some of those fences are still existing that I'm talking about, they're still there. They, they, they put a, have you seen them or anybody?
But they're tall at six feet?
Twelve feet.
So the draft that I have here says a six foot tall fence. We can, we can, you know, not change that number.
Where'd you get the six feet from, is this just something you're, you're thinking would be a good size or is that something else that you've seen in previous experience?
Uh, I wanna say that the vegetative requirement, yeah, so if you look at the very next section there. Six point twelve point eight point two point two vegetation. That's very important, it's language. If vegetation is provided for screening, vegetation shall be of the type that will reach a maximum height of six feet. So I just tried to create.
Sort of like me, vegetation, is there anything that defines that?
Um, it says, a proposed vegetation plan must be approved by designated Aliments County Agricultural Extension Service agent prior to planting.
So in theory, I could put up Bradford pears to get eight foot.
Yeah.
Tall, and then the bottom half of it is just trunk and open, right?
I would really like to see anytime that our ordinance talks about vegetation as uh native plants to this region.
And I'm just saying, Brad, pick native plant that is a tree.
Right.
That has a trunk and you can see through the trunk line and you, you know, so what does, what does vegetation mean?
Right.
Trunks?
Right.
That's good, that.
That's an excellent question, but.
It does go on to explain what that is, they have to be in close proximity so that there's a continuous unbroken hitch road.
Hmm. Yeah, so there's still some vagary there, but at least it is more specific than our current fence standards. But obviously any of this is um still up for debate, but um. Those are the major, major changes that I've. Got before we hear how this.
This is only being for the, for slight roads, public roads, is that correct? Or is it from anywhere?
Well, the ordinance, I don't remember exactly where, but it does talk about from a public roadway, more from neighboring from.
From public.
Yeah.
Public. When you're in your house, you're in public. So I, you brought up seventy, there's parts of seventy that you can write down that have fences on the front, you can still say back of it. I don't think those fences.
Sounds like a hill.
Yeah, I don't think they're twelve foot and they weren't solid until Copart came involved. And Copart put metal building panels on the front of them, but I don't think they're twelve foot, I think they're ten foot pieces.
Well, I was guessing.
Yeah, but they're not six.
Well, they're not six.
Either in the Hall River, E T J or the better, E T J. I'm just using those for example, but, but given what recently happened down there. There's nothing in here about, it says something about a buffer to a stream. But they're in flood zones and you know what happened when that rain came and.
Yeah, because it was, uh, some of the junkyards that were down on. Down on eighty seven. They, they end up having to, to close because they couldn't, they couldn't meet the ordinance. And I, I thought it was, it, it was. It was a one, it was a ten foot, it was, it was exceptionally high fence to put up. Or you could plant the vegetation like legal and cypresses, you know, but like I said, it could be no break in it.
So is there anything that keeps a new junkyard from going in the watershed or flooding?
The only.
That's on a building permit, so.
So the watershed protection ordinance explicitly bans junkyards in the critical area. Not in the balance. And then the only similar environmental protection feature in this ordinance is the buffer from. Uh, streams, a fifty foot stream buffer in six point twelve point nine.
So that was back creek down on seventy, isn't it? It was.
I believe so, yeah. We could certainly add that in there that they're not allowed in flood zones at all. I think that's an excellent point.
Is the. Is, is the junkyards in the high though?
No, they're this.
They're not in the high, they're all.
I think metal salvage yards or metal scrap yards or recycling facility, right, in the high though, but this is more specific to vehicles.
Good picture. Like that's a junk.
Automobile recycling facility. But you. You was thinking that you, if you, you would think about this thing, you know, um. Not only from a, from a, uh, vision standpoint, but a safety standpoint. That that junkyard should be just like Co Park is completely enclosed by fence so that. People couldn't get in. For the, for danger and especially when I say people, I'm talking about young kids getting in. A six foot fence ain't nothing to harm.
I think the minimum should be more than six foot. At the minimum should be more than six foot. I think Co Park went as high as they went for their own.
So eight feet, ten feet, twelve feet?
Twelve might be too much.
Eight foot, if, if you win an eight foot with a, with a. Like the Bob Ward deal, you know, at the top, you know, one of. Really, seriously. I mean, that's what, I mean. I've, I've been in a mini junkyard and most of them is like that because they don't want people coming in there. Cause they come in there and steal. And, uh, and it's got a big sign on the, on there. This is, this dog in there and they.
I said, I think.
They turn their dogs loose at night in there.
So my follow up question on the fencing being ten feet, do we, should we have symmetry with fencing and landscaping? So right now landscaping says six feet, right? And that's where I drew the height requirement for the fence. Do we want symmetry there?
Okay, so my reading on that landscaping was a minimum of six feet within three years of planting. Not a maximum of six feet. They always get taller than six feet. Yeah, historically, as long as stuff is live and growing, it's getting bigger, so. I, I'm not sure what you would plant that would max out at six feet. There are some things, but. Uh, you'd, you'd have to get out there and do some hunting to find.
Does it say minimum of six feet?
Yeah, I, I thought it was a minimum, not a maximum. But doesn't it say that it's got to be that at that point, within three years of planting?
Right.
And then it's got to be, you got to have stuff staggered so that if you had a row of Bradford pears in there, and then you had a, another. Corresponding row of crimson pygmy barberry or something that was gonna fill in the bottom. Full of briars and thorns and make it a little less. Appealing for somebody to want to sneak in. That's right.
Yeah.
I wish you had planted this idea about putting in Bradford pears.
I know they're not.
I mean, it's a good horn. I mean, if you're planting, or if you just, you plant oak trees, the same thing. It, you know.
Well, if they're getting to be six feet in three years, then that's in compliance.
But you can see by.
You're, you're alternating.
Because they're not thieves, most legitimate.
Once they just crop up.
We're gonna amend it, amend the draft to restrict any junkyard operations in flood zones. And we're going to require the fencing be at least ten feet high. And are we going to change anything about landscaping? Or do you wanna think about it and we can get back into that during the next meeting?
But I think, yeah, then we can think about it, but I think you should start out with a minimum of six feet. And within ten, within three years, it needs to be a ten foot. A Leland cypress will grow that much in three years.
Yeah.
Talk to me, Henry.
Oh, good tree plant.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Japanese jungles. They grow fast.
I don't know.
That's like Godzilla, right?
They work, uh.
Maybe just thinking of vegetation. Okay. Good deal. And, and of course, if you think of anything between them, feel free to email me.
And you're gonna change the.
Happy to take those.
You're gonna change the part that it's gonna be one to three and four to, uh.
What now?
Three or less and four and up.
That's already changed.
That's already changed.
Yeah, that's already changed.
Okay.
How do you guys feel about those numbers? And this doesn't apply, if you've got a garage, let's say you've got a garage in the back of your property and you got three. Nineteen sixty five Mustang and they're in that garage. This doesn't apply to you. This is only if they're outdoors, being stored on your property.
Just in public view.
In public view, yeah.
And they're not licensed, they're not insured, and you're not paying ad libbing tax on them.
Right. They can't be self propelled.
But you still supposed to be paying tax.
They're junk or damaged or whatever.
I could tell you about all that. I haven't been there, done that, oh. It, it's in this ordinance, I mean, I'm, uh, without not reading it, I thought at one time it was, it was written. That, uh. A junk car. Was designated as a car that did not run.
That's part of the, yeah, if you're looking at the definition, it's got a few different.
Okay.
Does, isn't self propelled, doesn't have a tag, is dismantled, is, is worthless.
If you got a car that's sitting outside and it'll run and it'll move, it's not considered a junkyard, a junk.
Well, and we've had those types of complaints and we followed up on them and we say, hey, listen. Uh, this old rusty old nineteen seventy five Ford might look like junk, but. They drive it, they use it for their farm, they go to, from A to B.
Whole lot of them call them home.
For many years I owned a nineteen eighty two Chevy C ten. Used to be light blue, but now it's mostly rust.
Ain't you got some?
It wouldn't drive me far, but then you drive it, it's licensed, it's tagged, it has insurance.
Yeah, I will just write down myself, grab it on the farm.
You're just reviewing it. Again, this is gonna be the larger package of the suite of provisions to the U V O. It's gonna go to the commissioners and.
Y'all think the three. Vehicles sitting, not moving.
I think some people, if they dig into this, are gonna say we're getting real close to. That what we don't wanna be doing, that's telling Henry what he can and can't do over where he pays the tax. But at the end of the day, you got, you gotta put a number in somewhere.
Well, I'm sorry, but if Henry is accumulating junk vehicles and lives beside me and then creates a nuisance for my life. And I would like to tell Henry not to do that. The rats and the thieves and the kids.
But your county commissioner don't agree with that.
If he lives next to you and this is becoming a problem. We all know that the number one solution is for you to go over and say, Henry. I don't know if you realize this or not, but what's going on right here is causing rats and they're getting over in my yard. And y'all sort it out where he does something else with it, whatever. But when the, when the county has to start telling him what he can and can't do because. Those were the problems.
Cause they have no authority to do that.
And some folks might say that when you get too many people, then those problems go away.
Alright, so that's.
You got some announcements, thank you.
I got a couple. Yeah, so just kind of recap, cause obviously we, um. Um, worked on the policy recommendation for quite a while. That was presented to the commissioners in August. They elected to take no action. So we're kinda back to square one.
Watch that on YouTube instead of going in person.
Sorry, I did not give you a very entertaining show. Um. So one thing we will have to do, uh, because we're going to the U D S section by section. Part of the changes proposed to them were changes to the subdivision ordinance. They took no action there, so we're gonna have to go back and still work out some changes in the subdivision ordinance, but not really get into the lot sizes and. Some of those other features, and that'll just be right in line with these other kind of tweaks that we're doing.
So they're not gonna do anything about it? They, they decided to let it go.
For now.
Well, the information, not just, I'm gonna ask a question for information purposes. The information that you provided to the county commissioners was very vague, I thought. It was not detailed out like we've been working on for months.
So I've. Kind of been preparing for that presentation. It was giving the summary of the most important stuff. This isn't a public hearing, this isn't. You know, get into the details, this is a staff recommendation to summarize the most important features. And if they want to ask questions, if they want those details in the.
But it wasn't presented in a way to where it was gonna be, was gonna be frowned upon, I thought. It was just not enough information, in my opinion. That was given to the county commissioner, but then make an educated decision whether they wanna proceed or not. And the, the recommendation that we worked on gave the commission what they was asking, so gave the commission what they asked, well, now they still want. So in here.
That, the only thing, the only thing that was, was, that was heard. Was about the lot size. There was nothing mentioned about the, the map that had been drawn and, and.
Different divisions, the agriculture district, the community, the residential, none of that was in the information that I could see. Important information. So I don't understand why they didn't have better information. That's what I'm, I'm asking the question.
Well, they had that information in their packet.
But it was, but then it was, it was very vague.
And I watched, I watched it.
See what was given to them. I looked to see what was given to them because when the reaction from the county commissioners. Did not coincide with what said, what the recommendations that was put forward to them. It was very vague.
I did not see physically their packets.
I did.
Um. Um. I think there was a concerted effort. On a group in our county to make a push. Against the lot sizes and lot sizes around.
It did, but they also saw what the county commissioners saw. They did not see the detail. So those people, if that's what they saw, and that's all they saw. That would cause them to have a complaint. That's the point I'm trying to make. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, just side stopping it. Just so, just saying. It wasn't enough. And they killed it and, and after we worked in months of it, and that's killed.
With no.
The game went the wrong way.
They give you no, they give you no, no direction on it, no, 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 uh. Input, no feedback, no nothing. That's what really. Got me. There was no discussion whatsoever among those. Five commissioners, back to you, or even the staff that was there, you know. But he, he was on the Zoom thing, but he wasn't.
Hey, he wasn't.
Oh, he wasn't even on Zoom? Okay. I was in Europe, so I. I was watching it from over there. But if I'd been here, I'd. Uh, I was disappointed too. I was disappointed that there was no, there, there was just no discussion about it and what these. What these things were implicated in, what they've been or anything.
I think there was one public speaker that touched on the community. And.
I think it was.
Public speaker, she used her three minutes to speak in favor.
One, I think it was two, one and actually two people that spoke in favor.
But one was more, I thought she was more about the, the, the. The Billy's. The Mill Billings designation.
Yeah. Wish the commissioner could see the whole thing. And take the time to look at it. They may have a different opinion of it. Now, I hope a commissioner is taking some time to listen to this meeting tonight, I hope.
I think there were a lot of good parts to the work and what was presented, and I wish it had been heard in a different light. Cause I think that. We as a county where we sit with a lot of the other counties that have. Guidance, I don't wanna say restrictions, because I don't think that's the correct word, but guidance on what can go and where it can go and how, how. Most people envision what they wanna see happening in the county is. Planned for. We are not anti-growth. But. It would be nice to have some ability to forecast that, and, and I know that affordable housing is a big thing and. And it, you know.
What is affordable housing?
It depends on what you make, right? Um, yeah.
Well, I, I, I will share something with y'all that, uh, I was in the bank. And my banker, she wanted to know if I seen their magazine, First Horizon. And First Horizon done a study. It's in the magazine. And it says about affordable houses in, in, in Alamance County. And she asked me, was this right, you know? In Alamance County, a medium sized house, that's what they've got, is a hundred and, and, I mean, two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And with that number in place, with the amount of income in, in Alamance County, only sixty one percent of the people that live in Alamance County. Would qualify for a loan. To, to buy this house. Only sixty one percent.
I would say that's probably correct.
And that's what's, that was in that, but that, when you look, it, it had all of the counties in there. And their medium houses are anywhere from, uh, three fifty to four fifty. And, uh, that was in the seventies and eighties.
Percentage of forty?
They could afford it.
I mean, I haven't looked recently at the numbers, but there are numbers that are published on the, the average or the median salary per jurisdiction and.
Yeah, I, I, it was kinda, I, I've been gonna go back down there to make down there and tell all, one of the magazines so I can read that thing. Well, she said that she didn't normally read them, but she was gonna read this.
Fortunately, in our, affordable housing for a lot of people is trailers.
Everybody's rent?
Rent's no longer affordable.
Yeah, that's what they're doing, you know.
You're gonna have people that will exploit. Whatever it is. And if we, if we get housing in Alamance County to where. Ninety, eighty five, one hundred percent of the people can afford a stick built house. On a thirty thousand square foot plus lot. They're gonna be folks coming in here from, you just called out where, and they're gonna be buying them up like french fries at McDonald's.
Well, that, that was, that was what I was looking at that point in that thing. Is that you can see why they're coming here when you look at what a medium sized house here in Alamance County is running versus Guilford County.
They've been doing it for a year. There was a guy come in this very room. Not quite twenty years ago and told us what was doing. Not quite twenty years ago and told us what was doing wrong and how stupid we were and all this kinda stuff. And he, he bought some property and went to court. And had on paper that property moved to a different county. Cause it's taxes. Now, I do not know for a fact if he still lives on that property, I don't know if he's still alive, candidly, don't much care. But if he stays there long enough, he will save more money. In the difference in taxes than he spent in court to get that verbiage changed on piece of paper. The land ain't moved. But on paper, he's in different county. And, and when people have the time. And the financial resources to do things like that. The average. Lived here all their life, multiple generations, you can get up every day, work, do something. You, you can't compete, and that's, that's not a level playing field. And, and if folks don't understand it, they don't get it. And, and when that tidal wave washes over you, it's too late, it's like that car lot, it's like that junkyard down there. When the water come up and flooded everything, it was too late to get it on dry ground. It's a damage has been done. And this county is no different.
This county's not gonna change any of it to, to protect that if the county commissioners don't read what the, what the recommendation was, they did, they don't have.
The county commissioners are not out there in the county, they don't know, don't affect them.
But they, they asked. And that's a problem. That's a big problem with me.
No discussion.
Real problem. All that time we invested in it.
More announcements, uh, so at their Tuesday meeting, the Historic Properties Commission asked that we amend, uh. Not really their rules of procedure, cause it's more of the regulations that govern the board. But give them the same allowance that the planning board has to review applicants. Uh, and give a recommendation to the commissioners for applicants to the Historic Properties Commission. So unless there is an objection, but the planning board, uh, when we go back to amend article two for the, the full. Presentation of UVO amendments, then that allowance for HPC applicant review that we demand. The reason I'm bringing it up is, you guys are the board that makes the review and recommendation before it ultimately goes to commissioners. So that's what we'll be talking about on Tuesday night. Any objections to that?
I mean, what you saying?
Why are we in the HPC?
Well, because it'd be an amendment to the UVO.
Oh, okay. There was a procedure in there.
Correct. Uh, last thing for the October meeting, I will be on vacation. The annual family vacation to Florida, first week of October and this week it's falling on the planning board meeting day.
You can send me any calls too.
That's the, that's exactly what I'd like to.
I don't know what part of Florida, but we could go, we could have a travel.
There you go. So I can prepare materials for your review, just like we've been doing every month. Uh, we could not have a meeting, I could see if my staff could sub in, or maybe.
Actually, it was supposed to be out here.
Do we move it to another, the, the next week or something, or is that a?
That be a special meeting or that just be a revision to the meeting day?
You can announce that you're gonna. We have to do much more, I mean, I should look and see, maybe not same time, but. Yeah, it can be moved. Or you can.
So you figure we got about five or six more nights of this, to, to wrap this up?
Yeah, so six point fourteen is the RV ordinance, uh, then article seven is the definitions. Article eight is all of the appendices, article eight might, article eight's big. And then you gotta do the subdivision ordinance again.
So we're gonna be after first of the year wrapping up. Either way.
Either way, especially if we don't meet in December and we have our annual Christmas dinner together.
Taking a bunch, you got a plan.
Do have a plan.
You have a plan?
Do have a plan. And when we get through this, we're gonna start that plan tonight. Okay, so are, are we alright to just not have a meeting in October? And, and do November and pick up in January and, and finish this out? We are at that? Okay, do we need to vote on it before we got a consensus?
Officially cancel the October meeting.
Um, yeah, let's see.
Okay, got a motion, any second, alright, got a motion to second, no meeting in October, all in favor, I? Alright, no meeting. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
That's all I got for now.
Uh, Christmas, we would be looking at either the, the second Tuesday. Or the second Thursday in December, depending on when we can get on the schedule. Is anybody here now would be interested in going, if you are, raise your hand. To a Christmas dinner.
Okay, yeah, okay, I thought you was just going to a certain place, you just fixed the mentions.
Well, not yet, but, but we, if, if there's enough folks to interested in having it, then we'll move forward that.
Could you repeat those dates again?
Uh, the second Tuesday or the second Thursday.
Of December.
Probably at this point, we could get to second Thursday. Historically, we've had a little better turnout from this board than the HPC.
So our normal meeting date would be December the eleventh. Which is the second.
Second, okay.
Second Thursday.
So it would either be the ninth or the eleventh.
Okay, yeah. If you do one of those, it's fine for me.
Alright, well, I'll, next time we meet, I'll have a some. Suggestion as to where and all I got right there, I'll, I'll get something to Matthew and let him send it out. Prior to then, cause we wouldn't need to wait till November to find out what's going on.
I'd like to play it.
I'm so pleased with your turn, be me to that second.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Motion in a second, here we go.
Please, the county buys better windows for the building.
Soundproof?
Well, good luck with that.
They probably haven't invested in handicap accessibility out here first, but.
Henry, how was your trip?
It was good.
Good, glad, glad to hear that. I thought about you a couple times.